Good evening, I'm County Commissioner Denise Strehouse.
Good evening, Vice President Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Kristi Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Thank you all so much, I'm Stephanie Summer Odumis, President of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. And so this evening, we're here specifically to have a public hearing to discuss the 2023 budget. And we will open it up with a brief summary from our County Administrator, County Administrator, why do I always want to make you a Commissioner, Jeff Aludo.
Thank you Commissioner. So I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, this is the bridged version of our, of our presentation. But I think it does give a fairly good overview of the, of the all funds budget for 2023. So Kristi, I don't have the clicker, so are you able to click through for me? So the all funds budget totals $1.2 billion, the recommended all funds budget totals $1.2 billion. The general fund portion of that budget, which is the largest fund in the all funds budget, is $352.2 million recommended to the board. Next slide. Just to give folks watching a, just a general summary of, of the different funds that are included in the all funds budget, again as I indicated, the general fund is the largest of those at 352 million, you have JFS at 281 million, the stadium and parking fund at 118 million, and on, all the way down, you've got engineer funds in there at 38.2, our lodging tax fund at 16.2, funds for the 911 center, debt service, and different levy funds like the zoo levy in here as well at 7.2 million. But there is a host of, of funds that comprise the all funds budget, this is just some of the largest. Next slide. To give you some idea of major revenue sources for the county, sales tax is the largest revenue source in the general fund at 143.7 million, property tax is at 44.7, we have other intergovernmental funds like the local government fund at 16.3 million. Some general observations is that sales tax growth slowed during 2022, we're projecting little growth in 2023, we have, we're projecting stable property taxes, public defender reimbursement presumed at 90%, which is not quite the 100% we are looking for from the state, but markedly better than the 50% or so that we used to receive from the state for public defender reimbursement, so that's a good sign. Real estate fees are expected to be down as the economy cools a bit, and we are still anticipating to see rapidly rising interest rates and interest earnings. In terms of where the money, so that's where the money comes from, where does the money go? Criminal justice expenses are approximately 73% of the general fund, personnel makes up 66% of all of our expenses, so largely what the county does is, is pay for people to carry out the, the public work necessary to meet the needs of residents of Hamilton County. So we're anticipating market-based adjustments that will, that will put upward pressure on compensation for 2023, healthcare costs falling slightly, and also some non-personnel expenditures including the onboarding of an EMA warehouse, an extension office, a satellite facility, also technology needs in the sheriff, as well as growth in juvenile court youth cases. Our general fund reserve continues to remain strong, as you can see, it has grown substantively from 2018, when we were well below the, the 15% necessary, or, or recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. This is obviously a major indicator of financial health of a, of a public sector organization, provides for capacity for cash flow, for capital financing, to insulate against emergency capital needs and financial shocks. It's also the hallmark of a, of a, of a high bond rating that, to ensure, a strong fund balance helps us with our bond rating with the rating agencies, so that when we go out to borrow money in the, in the public markets, that we are getting the best rate for the taxpayer. Last slide. As we put together the 2023 recommended budget, we really focused on five primary policy areas, which were derived from board policy direction, as well as direction provided throughout the year. Number one, operating an effective government, so everything from ensuring that our technology was up to date in our county facilities and operations, our facilities capital maintenance, compensation of employees, all of our operations that really is mandated by the Ohio Revised Code, even down to the, the office where we are currently sitting, the Board of Elections, making sure that those offices, Board of Elections, Recorder, Treasurer, and Auditor, that they are funded to ensure the proper functioning of county government. Investing in our local economy, making sure that we are poised to partner effectively with local jurisdictions to spur the revitalization of the community, and to partner with communities to invest in some of their highest priority areas. We do this through grants to many of our local political subdivisions, by partnering with agencies such as Alloy Development Ready, the port, and also funding operations of the county like our Planning and Development Office, which is really the front door for economic development in the county, and making sure that they have what they need, so that when people are coming in for things like zoning certificates, building permits, that they receive first-rate service, and that they can go through a process that's efficient and gets them on their road to constructing and investing in Hamilton County. Maintaining a safe community, as we said, public safety, criminal justice is a, is almost three-quarters of our budget. The county all funds budget funds the sheriff's office, including the operations of patrol and the justice center, the operations of the courts, prosecutor, crime lab, 911 EMA. Fostering a thriving community, so operating the services and programs designed to protect some of our community's most vulnerable residents, everything from funding our job and family services office, our mental health operations, children's services, seniors, all of our senior levy programs are funded in this policy area. The Office of Youth under Job and Family Services, all of our addiction response offices or operations are funded here as well. And finally, protecting our environment and public infrastructure, the county does a lot as it relates to environmental quality and the infrastructure of the county, so everything from operating stormwater services, maintaining and repairing roads and bridges, maintaining fire hydrants, advancing our, our environmental programs like recycling rates and watershed management, et cetera, that's all wrapped up here under protecting our environment and public infrastructure. So the full budget can be found online at www.hamiltoncountyohio.gov. When I say budget, again, I'm referring to the Administrator's recommended budget. The budget is now in the hands of the Board, which will put its, its imprint on the budget, and hopefully look to pass a budget on, on December, around December 15th, at which time we will use that as the implementation guidance for all of our programming in 2023. So with that, Madam President, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much for your summary, I would like to ask if anyone in the audience has any questions as relates to our Administrator's summary, you're certainly welcome to do that before we get to the cards.
Okay.
I would also ask my colleagues, did you want to have any comments as relates to the summary that was given?
No, I just hear, I'll hear from the public first.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't want us to forget about what he had said, and so, just keep it on the forefront of our mind. So I have two cards, anyone in the audience that wants to speak and did not fill out a card, you'll get two minutes to speak. I love these, these microphones are just great, I feel like, okay. Margot Spence, how are you? Welcome, yeah. She wants to speak about the settlement funds, you have two minutes.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, and thank you, County Commissioners, for allowing me to come before you today. My name is Margot Spence, and I'm the President and CEO of First Step Home. We provide substance use disorder treatment and safe, affordable housing for women and women with children. First Step Home allows women to bring their children with them as space permits. Over the past 29 years, First Step Home has offered a safe haven for women to recover. We truly are a miracle unfulted in the Walted Hills community. We witness many women work hard on their goals and objectives to maintain sobriety, obtain custody of their children, become gainfully employed, some advancing to management positions in local businesses. I would like to thank you County Commissioners for your support of First Step Home and our mission of helping women break the cycle of addiction. Last Thursday, several of my colleagues testified during the budget hearing on the need to ensure the One Ohio settlement dollars are used to support the SUD agencies on the front line, helping the victims of the opiate crisis. I was in the audience last Thursday, and your response was very encouraging. I hope that the support will come very soon to help core effective recovery services. Because of the pandemic, it has had a very devastating impact on many of us financially. In closing, thank you again for all that you do for those in need in our community, it is very much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Wade Johnston, he wants to speak about bike trails.
Hi.
Hi. Madam President, members of the Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening, my name is Wade Johnston, I'm the Director of Tri-State Trails. I'm here to ask, here today to ask you to continue investing in bicycling infrastructure in Hamilton County. I rode my bike here today from Uptown, and when I left this morning, I did not intend on getting rained on, but I did. And did you know that 20% of Cincinnati residents do not have access to a vehicle? So this is something that people encounter on a regular basis, if they don't have access to a car. In the city, infrastructure improvements are being made that are going to be making bicycling for transportation and recreation a lot safer and more comfortable, through projects like the Crown and the Wasson Way Trail, and the Ohio River Trail and more. But across the county, there's still very much work to do to connect our trail network and realize the benefits that comes along with that. Excuse me. I've included some maps for you to review at your convenience, outlining some of the vision and plans that we have for Hamilton County. And one of the big ones that I wanted to draw your attention to is the Mill Creek Triangle Trail. This is a, a vision to connect 12 neighborhoods, 12 communities in the center of Hamilton County to the city of Cincinnati via the Crown, and up to Butler County to the Great Miami River Trail. Funds from the county could be really instrumental in getting more communities to participate in this effort. We're getting ready to do a fundraising effort that will result in a feasibility study, so that we can be positioned to apply for grants from the federal government and take advantage of infrastructure funding available through the bipartisan infrastructure law. I know that there is about $350,000 in a previous budget for the TID, and I'm asking you to continue investing in that, because $350,000 is hard to leverage for something really meaningful when we're talking about big infrastructure projects. And if we continue to invest in this over the years, we can have a larger sum of money to do something really meaningful with. So thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next we have Nicole Mora. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, good evening, my name's Nicole Mora, I'm Chief Strategy Officer at Women Helping Women. Women Helping Women has had the great fortune of being supported by this body through some really key transformative initiatives that are really changing lives for survivors of gender-based violence in their families, and we come to you today to propose structural funding for prevention education. In 2018, after passing a resolution from the recommendation of the Commission on Women and Girls, the Board invested in, through the Children's Services Levy funding to life-saving response through our divert program, and making it really possible in those short four years to go from one jurisdiction to now having reached 10,000 survivors, 70% of whom had never been connected to services in the past. Currently, we heard, we serve more survivors, twice as many survivors, through intervention services as we do prevention services. And what I want to lift up through our divert outreach is that we found 79% of the time that we go out on those calls, we're responding to a woman with one or more children in the home. So we know it's impacting our youth, and it's so important that we implement that focus on prevention. Our goal over the next five years, in line with the 2022 recommendation on the Commission on Girls, is to expand really robust programming designed to reduce gender-based violence. We're currently implementing evidence-based programming in seven of the 22 districts in Hamilton County, this represents 26 schools, approximately 60 programs per school year. And in order to scale and fully reach all of Hamilton County, it's a $272,000 investment for that expansion. We have seen the ability to go from recommendation to investment to impact through divert, and we know that we can do the same for prevention education, and really, you know, compound that impact to prevent generational violence. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Roberto.
Soria.
Soria, thank you, welcome.
Thank you for giving me your time, Commissioners, and I want to note, I would follow all of you, and I yet to regret my vote. You've heard from my esteemed colleagues, the CEO from First Step Home, CCAT, Tarot House, I'm the Medical Director and Interim CEO for the Crossroads Center. We've been in business for about 70 years, helping turn people, helping people turn their lives around. We are a community-based mental health and addiction centers program, which, over the years, thousands upon thousands of people, most of these people socially marginalized through their addictions and their mental health issues. I'm here again to promote that the Commissioners continue to support us in providing these very needed services to people we serve, through the appropriate funding of the higher mass fundings. Again, nothing more can say to my esteemed colleagues, I'm just here to remind you that this is where we are all at, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. I have no other cards, so at this time, I just want to thank everyone who came out to give their comments, and your priorities are our priorities, and one And your priorities are our priorities in one office or the other, that's for sure. As we evaluate what we're going to do, as we look forward to passing the budget on December 15th, both of my colleagues have submitted their budgets to administration and finance, and our chiefs of staff will be communicating with each other to see where our priorities are and if we can agree on where money should be put and what should be our priorities for 2023. So we are working feverishly, I should say, to get our budget done and in order and make sure that the priorities of the people are also our priorities. So that's what we're working on. I will open it up for any, I'm used to looking that way for Alicia, for Vice President Reese, if you have any comments.
Yeah, I just want to thank those who came out this evening and participated in our public hearing. I think from a couple of comments that we heard from this public hearing and the one that we had before downtown, there were, and I know we're not going back and forth with each speaker, but I do think it would be helpful, I know this is the all funds in terms of general fund and those restrictive funds, but there are other funds like the One Ohio Fund, the ARPA Funds. If there, I think would be helpful in the final component that we put on here. Obviously, we're voting on this one, but also showing people. The One Ohio Fund is a fund that's an opportunity, showing the ARPA Fund, because we had some people ask about affordable housing. So I just think for the public, it would be great to have a slot. I know we have these other slots down here about the recommended $1.2 billion budget, but we also have other investments, and maybe some slide that can showcase that in maybe a bullet point type of way so that if they don't see it in this particular budget book, they know that it is, we understand that the issue and the topic is important to us, and it is scheduled in maybe another part of the funding that we have voted on. So just want to, I just think that might be helpful. I know in the past years, way before, we didn't have ARPA as an option or a One Ohio Fund. But I just think having that identified so people know that those topics are not forgotten and that we are and have thought about those and put them, but they're coming out of other funding sources. So if we could have some kind of one slide to add to that, I think would be helpful for people to be able to see those particular initiatives.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out. We had a wide range of priorities brought to us, and really appreciate you taking the time, especially in inclement weather, to come out and join us this evening. So thanks again for being here.
Thank you. Well, at this time, I would like to make a motion to close our public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you all so much.